Commission yet, so um you know, it's not a direct conflict of interest under the existing bylaws. There are no perjuices related to conflict of interest in the bylaws. That's why we're having, you know, consideration or vote on it.
I guess the question would be where do we need to go with the current motion to be able to go to the wind ordinance and have discussions today?
Um, we'll probably need to have a vote on the motion, um, you know, either it's
We're discussing that motion already.
Either it's gonna pass or it's gonna fail and then, um, and then the natural
That would go whether we're gonna further discuss the wind ordinance or not.
Mm-hmm.
So if you've, if you vote in favor of the motion, then we're not gonna discuss the wind. If you don't.
No, it would go if, if it's agreed that there is a conflict, then she would just not be part of the discussion.
Your other alternative is if, if, if we're not comfortable making a decision on the motion today, you know, we could table discussion of the wind ordinance today and do it all at the next meeting. But that's up to you, that's just another option there.
The only question I have is Brandy made the motion, I'm second to that. Then, um, he says no. Yeah, he seconded that, cause I mean, he's, you said definitely you didn't feel like Kim had any, you know, she's
I said that she has not presented any bias to our discussion so far. Um, if we were gonna, if we're gonna vote amend to put bylaws the way that they're written, there would need to be a vote for a conflict of interest that's already spelled out in black and white. She admitted that she is married to somebody that has a lease signed. That would fall under this red lettering without vote. So. And I think we came here to the table hoping to get to the wind ordinance and I don't think it's enough for us to continue on the wind ordinance. I don't know if there's any, any way to go ahead with this looming as far as in, in, in our commission. My hard decision. You know, I mean, that's what all of our, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Are we still discussing?
What is your view, Tom?
Um, on this motion? I think we, we, we proceed on. I don't think there is a conflict. That answers your question.
I guess I'd like to make a recall on my performance over the past twelve years that I've never demonstrated a conflict of interest. I haven't voted with a bias. I am also on Board of Appeals and I have never voted with a bias. That is, I feel like I have very strong ethics and integrity. And I know that we have a responsibility to be fair to our community and there will be compromise. And that compromise comes from both sides. And I don't know what else I can do to demonstrate my integrity other than what I have done in the past.
I think you, you already have demonstrated your integrity there. I don't think there's question there for that, so. Yeah, I think you, hasn't that the board talked about this before?
Not much.
Actually, I attended a board meeting where Larry Gilbert, um, was the chairperson. And I thought it was not conflicting that it was, that I was assigned and I was appointed by the board and I would continue until the board saw otherwise.
And I would just add that we've also not been able to have any meetings on wind because you guys wanted legal advice. And we're getting some legal advice and now we don't want the legal advice. Some other lawyers would say this.
No, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that at all.
I think that's what we're saying as well. I appreciate the work that you've put forth here. My concern is, is that it needs to, knowing that there is other opinion out there, right here in our county,
Mm-hmm.
I feel like we need to look at it a little bit deeper. And I think that consistency in our county is going to make us unified and a better county, a stronger county. And, and that's where I'm coming from. I, I, no offense to you, Leslie.
No, no, that, no, and I, I hope you don't think anything I'm saying is, is certainly not at all.
Not, not from you at all, no, thank you.
Well, I think we're, we're falling into that gray area. If we read it like this, like it, if, the red, the red print that I'm reading says if planning commission member has business or financial interest, which you've disclosed that you do, although you say and you have shown that it doesn't affect your decisions. So now we're in a whole nother area.
That's right.
We, we admit there's a conflict, but does it really affect the way that we're conducting our business as a commission? I think, I think part of it was is that the public now, you've acknowledged it publicly. They can accuse you of, like maybe you make a decision and you say, when three of us are saying, well, what about five hundred? And you're like, no, what about six hundred and we get held up on it? Then that might be a conflict being shown then, but that hasn't happened yet. But on the legal side of it, there's a conflict. Even though it hasn't affected your decision-making process here, I don't think anybody's accusing you of that or saying that you have swayed one way or the other.
I think not.
Right. So it's again, we're, we're putting more gray area inside of a legal definition.
It's not personal. I mean, when I come up to a company and I say, you really shouldn't have just one person handling the cash. It's not because I think they're a bad person. It's, it's, it's proper procedures. You have to give confidence to the, the public, you know.
But when you go to my neighbors and you personally address me and, and your household personally addresses me, that's personal, Brandy.
I have not gone to your neighbors, Kim. And if you wanna sit here and do personal attacks, I think Phil need to, you know, you already have said that. And I, I don't appreciate that, Kim. You, you keep talking about that you're corporate, you know. That's, this is not how we conduct ourselves in, in, in meetings. So, you know, if you have a problem with me and you wanna talk about it outside the meeting, let's do it. You, you know my phone number, but I'm not gonna sit here and, and have you tell me that I'm dishonest and, and try to run my character down. Smile while you want, but.
That's what my question to you, that's if you do what information presented that we're acknowledging that a, a letter of a conflict clause in a bylaw would automatically say that Kim has a conflict? Does that automatically make it so she's recused?
Under the statute it is, but again, this hasn't been approved, so.
Right, so we're, we're ahead here.
If we adopted that, then yes, there would be.
Okay.
And that's your question, right?
Yes.
But un- until, you know, that is considered approved, if the, if the planning commission wants to continue work on the wind ordinance, I would say at a minimum, we probably wanna, you know, hold on it as a matter of, you know, course for this meeting. Um, you know, it, it might result in an issue admittedly if we decide tonight no conflict of interest, um, exists and then adopt this at the next meeting, um, cause that would seemingly conflict with the decision that we made tonight, but, um.
Well, that's what I'm kind of versed in looking at.
Right.
We're acknowledging there's a conflict, but we still say continue.
Well, we're, we're acknowledging there's a conflict based on whom you're listening to.
Correct.
According to the NTA, there isn't a conflict. According to what Leslie has presented to us, there is a conflict.
I question the NTA, but you're, you're like blanket applying that, I think there's a little more to it. So I'd like, I'd like to see that letter from them or something, if you have that.
And David, I guess that's what we're gonna ask you to go back and, and, and research that because I think as a board, you've talked about that, haven't you?
Yeah, I was, given to me, yes. That's what it explained to me is if, like me being a board member was a conflict of interest that we had signed, but anybody on here besides me.
Cause you're not a voting, you don't vote on the final version.
Never.
It was all right to proceed.
Correct.
So as a commission, we continue to proceed based on that guidance. But I think we got to a point as a commission that, wait a minute, we need to look a little further deeper into this subject matter. And that has brought us to where we're at today. So I can answer that question.
Right, that's what I was thinking, asking the question, do, is there a way that there is an encounter of conflict of interest, but we know that it doesn't affect us as a commission about discussions?
Not really. I guess the answer to that, but, um, you know, but yeah, I mean, like I said, I, you know, I just provide the information and get ready. You, you guys can, you know, make that decision for yourselves, you know, knowing, you know, the conflicting views and the law on this. It is, it is unfortunately a gray area of the law. I mean, that's why we, you know, the statute requires that planning commissions adopt a definition in their bylaws. Um, because there are, most of the law on conflicts of interest as they relate to municipal officers is, is not statutory. It's in case law. And case law is, you know, based on a decision based on a specific set of facts that may or may not directly relate to every particular potential conflict at hand. So that's why it's hard to, you know, give you a bright line answer and that's why there are differing opinions between attorneys on it. Um, so, but to answer your question, you know, I, I, I suppose that that, you know, is an option, but it's not something that I, I mean, if there's a conflict, it's a conflict, you know, so.
So I think we're looking at, what we don't want to acknowledge is because we don't have a bylaw that says that it's an automatic conflict and she's had disclosure, we either vote that she gets to continue with the discussion that we've had or table it until we have a bylaw written that states it. Either way, I think we need to do a bylaw that states it to table that for a final draft for the next.
We're very table that.
So with that being said, I don't know if that puts us in a position where we're not able to continue as far as the agenda to go to win ordinance review.
But I do have, I do have a motion on the table by Brandy to be seconded. And the motion is?
I believe that there is a conflict of interest based on what was disclosed. And that, that person should recuse themselves.
In discussion?
Deliberations.
Open it. Hey, boy. Can you second that?
I did.
Any other further discussion?
The only other question I have in the vote is that there is, and does that make us have to go back to the first page and start over? Even though we feel that there wasn't a
We're gonna go back to the first page and, or what? It haven't presented that way. The thought process tonight was that we were gonna start from page one and go through it, line by line where we are. And work through that point. My thought was is that a lot of it would go very quickly because we've already discussed a lot of it and we've already, should I say, agreed on a lot of it?
Yeah, yes.
So I mean, my thought was that we're gonna go really fast with some legal guidance if there was a, if we were just way off base. And I think Leslie's had some time to review it, um, to help guide us through the process.
I have some thoughts on that too, that I'd like clarified before we get into it. I don't know if now's the time to talk to it.
We're working on this motion first. May I, may I wanna get off the subject matter, cause we're close to where we need to go, I guess, as far as making the vote? Unless that discussion is about this, I'm sorry.
Well, it's more just contradicted, you know, you said you thought it was gonna go fast and I wanna make sure, you know.
Well, we'll see how fast it goes, you know what I'm saying, but yeah. I mean, I think we all thought we did some great work. I do.
I do too, but I don't know what the final, I mean, I haven't had a chance to look at all this, you know. So I guess my, I don't wanna get, we gotta get to this here, so we'll talk about it.
I think we have a hard decision as a commission, the four of us, you was good.
Outstanding.
Any other discussion? So. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Aye is a failed, is a failed motion.
So motion's failed?
Yes.
So. Next on the agenda is to review the wind ordinance.
I, I'm wondering, should we again, cut before the horse?
Motion failed.
What have been in the bylaws?
That's table till we have a final draft for next meeting. So we're still with them.
Can we catch?
Yeah. I mean, do we continue on with something stating that if we feel that something's been swayed, we strike it and start over again? Which I think you already proposed it because she's present, we're gonna start over anyway.
Leslie?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, my inclination is I would, I would, unless until we get a, you know, a bylaw revision, I would hesitate to having discussions on the wind ordinance. That's just my opinion, but I mean, if you guys wanna continue along with that.
I, I don't want to not work on it, believe me. I've wanted to work on this since July. Um, but boy, I guess I just, you know, we're treading legal waters here.
My only concern is in the event that we adopt these bylaws as written and then it becomes a conflict under the black letter of the law, a letter of the bylaws, even though we, the commission voted, did not pass a vote that it was a conflict. That's my only concern with it, um, so, but, but again, I mean, it, it's up to the commission to decide if you wanna continue with the wind ordinance, um, tonight. But, um, you know, I, once the, once the, um, discussion is done, it's already, I think it's already, you know.
Well, we haven't had any clarification, I mean, I know we had discussions on the bylaws and changes. Are we doing them as written? We went through some, changed some wording, um.
I think it was talked, we, we'd go back and do some further investigation.
So.
So we've come back to next meeting with some.
So the next meeting, we will be voting on some form of this draft?
Well, I'm not sure we will, we will, to be honest with you, because we're gonna have discussion about that top subject. Unless, I guess, we sit down and we come up with the bylaws amendment to that, in a group?
That's what we have to do because if we do this again in two months, we're not gonna discuss whatever.
Am I saying that probably right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you wanna move swiftly on, on the bylaw amendments.
So the, the, the table passed that we all passed was, so at next meeting, we're gonna vote on a proposed
Yeah, so I guess, I guess you, you, you might wanna come back with a proposal on what the bylaws you want it to look like.
I think I have, I've got mine, I'm giving this to Leslie. And I guess, can we, I'm correcting.
Well, if you get it to Leslie, I mean, I'm gonna ask that you give it to me too.
Well.
Yeah, and most of what you were talking about, except for the conflict portion, most of what you're talking about is statutory anyway, so I, I, I wouldn't think anyone's gonna have any problems with any of those proposal changes, like the ex petition member. That's all stuff that's, you require to follow by law anyway. I think the major topic of discussion is gonna be the conflict of interest and what that, what, how it's defined. So the vast majority of your amendments I foresee is not being, you know.
I feel like you have a copy for you too, just so, so you know.
I mean, let it be known that anytime any, any of you give any information to the board or to Leslie, I need, I need to be, I need to have a copy of that. I need to be.
If you're giving anything to Leslie, just so you know.
I'm just saying, if I'm just saying, as, as a commission, I should be copied up all that information.
As long as it's like a BCC, so we don't have a, um, a quorum of members on an email or something like that, so we don't have
At some point, I was wanting to address that, I know.
We can, man.
Um, so you have this one that you brought, Brandy has one that she brought.
That, that one that she has, that she gave to you is, I don't know, I'm sorry, you're talking about the bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, so we have two proposed drafts. And I think you being the chairperson, Phil, you get to have the fun job of figuring out what you wanna bring to the next meeting for us to vote on.
Yeah, and if anybody brings any more, then I think is, yeah, is a commission would look at that.
Are we allowed to receive a draft of it before the meeting individually to study up so we don't take you the wrong time?
Yep, I wouldn't, I would not want to have a spur of the moment on you anyway. So, um, yeah, no, I mean, and, and I encourage, you know, the members to, you know, you guys can reach out to me directly with, you know, thing, you know, language that you prefer and I can make sure that it's distributed to the other members and, you know, it's a collaborative process.
I'm gonna ask those be directed to me first?
That's fine, yep, yep.
Prior to you because I think, um, if I may say, you know, we're all conscious, conscientious.
Yep, I was just gonna say probably.
Um, I think that that needs to be directed through me before you give Leslie anything or the firm, anything. It needs to go through myself and I'm gonna say we also probably need to copy Todd on that, so he's aware of what is being fed.
And I would ask that as you take it, you copy the individual that you're sending it on their behalf. So if I send you something, I wanna be copied on the email that goes.
Sure.
I think that leads us right into what I was referring to. I know we all had that, um, discussion as far as our recommendations to you without a public meeting. And being new to the commission, I, I responded to you. I didn't think it was an issue, um, and then it was quickly brought to my attention that that's technically an issue.
You can, you can in this response, like you can circulate something and
Well, he was asking for my opinion on the matter.
Yeah, yeah, that, you can, as long as it's not a quorum.
And that text went exo- only to you.
Yeah.
Right.
If you look at that, yes, it didn't, it didn't include, like what I said yesterday, included everybody because it was a reminder to say, hey, we have a meeting tomorrow.
It's no different than when we had the discussion of what do you think about the next meeting? The weather was bad, I'm like, well, I'm probably not gonna be there either way.
Right.
Yeah, no, that, the only time I have an issue is when typically what we recommend is if you're sending out, like for example, if you were circulating a draft of an ordinance, pack, meeting packets in minutes, that's a little bit of a different story. But if you're circulating something that you want the commissioners to review and, you know, create comments to at the next meeting, I would BCC every member so that we don't get into a reply all situation where somebody's replying and everyone's, you know, there's an email chain of all the commissioners. You can, you can have a conversation between two members, cause that's not a quorum. Um, but I always, I, it's always best course if you're gonna send something to every commissioner to just do it as a BCC so that if they're replying to it, they're only replying to you rather than to the rest of the group and so that the actual discussions and deliberations happen at the meeting.
Is that, I mean, is that?
Yeah, I was, I was more or less having this discussion with you for the public because of the article that was written. And I don't want anybody to think that we're doing behind the table deals here. That basically was what I was
I've not read the article, I've not seen the articles, I have no idea what the
I, I did because I like Google my name, with the name like Quanta Strike, I can see my name, and that one popped up and I'm like, oh, what's it? So.
First question, Google my name.
For public, yes, public disclosure. We do have discussions and because it's not a quorum, it's not in violation of any of our bylaws or anything by any
That text was sent to, to each of you individually, it wasn't sent to you as a group? And my thought process behind the reason why I sent that text to each of you is because I want, because we didn't, we weren't gonna have any more meetings and that the, the board has had a group of attorneys that they were considering. And if you have a opinion, then please express that opinion. I mean, I expressed mine twice in the board meeting, did I do it? Um, I know Brandy sent
I sent a letter to the board.
To the board, yep.
And is that in any violation that you would see as a legal standpoint?
If it's, if you're only, if it's only a communication between two members of the planning commission, it's not at all gonna be exactly.
But I think, but I think the Daily News, um, interpreted it as a violation.
Right.
But don't always believe what you read on the Daily News.
What they, what the Daily News was upset about was FOIA request, um, because leading text.
Leading text.
We're gonna communicate like that, she, article was about, maybe you could
Yeah, and FOIA, so that is just for, for, I mean, FOIA openly exactly with two different issues. When you FOIA, when, when, um, an individual submits FOIA request, communications between planning commissioners regarding matters of public policy or matters of, you know, your, your role on the planning commission are subject to the FOIA. So just something to keep in mind too, as a, as a public official, um, you know, unless it's a, a private email that has nothing to do with a particular email or text message, that has nothing to do with a particular issue of public concern, your text messages are subject to the Freedom of Information Act, so just, yeah.
Yep, so. Any further discussion on that subject, I guess?
Just clearing the air for us.
I don't know where to clear for me.
I do have one question, so for this, she's gonna be doing moratorium for me. Do we have to vote on that before I take it to the board? You know what changes she does, or am I good for whatever you?
No, I just, we're all set. She'll send it to you and then you'll wind it that, um, and I think we're gonna take out a couple of words.
Yeah, yeah.
In there, um, and we're good with that, so for you to present to the board, yes.
Oh, what word, what words are we, are we taking out words?
Oh, I think Brandy.
No, I think we were talking for the, we're talking for the extension of our, 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 not talking anything on
Got it, got it, okay.
But you're going to
We're adding, we're adding solar and we're meeting in twelve months, we need to make sure, got it, correct. Yep, and no, the planning commission doesn't need to formally make a recommendation to town to board on that. I'll just make sure you get a copy of that before your January meeting, so.
So, where we're at?
I think ten
Sorry, I guess, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, ten on our agenda.
Ten on our agenda. So I guess I'm gonna go out there and say, you know, do I have two things left, well, let me go. Does the commission feel that we can move forward and discussing? Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that, that does the commission feel that we can move forward and discussion of the wind ordinance tonight? And talking through, starting at the beginning on the proposed communication that we've already spoken to.
So you're addressing the commission with a question and a motion?
Yeah, I'm confused about your motion.
Well, the motion is just the first, okay, the motion is to proceed discussion on the wind energy turbine section three point four.
So did you need a motion to follow the agenda because it's on the agenda?
Um, just as it relates to
Our discussion that we previously talked about.
Our bylaw, you know, yeah.
So you're making a motion that
To proceed
Proceed.
Discussion of the wind.
Well, actually, you have it written as wind ordinance review. So we could have a review with Leslie up to the point that we're at and not have to worry about cause a review's not a discussion.
Well, I made a motion, can I get a second? Then we can discuss. Is that all right? Support, discuss. So, yeah, we'd be reviewing it, yes.
Yeah.
Kind of feels splitting hairs a little bit.
Probably, yeah, I can see your point there.
Trust me, I, I said it before, I wanna work on this more as much as anybody here. Uh, but got the legal advice, you know, we're, we're walking a fine line here. So I'm, I'm real hesitant to move forward with any kind of substantial discussion on this.
Okay. You ready?
So I have a question for you, Leslie. You have received this in advance.
The wind ordinance?
The prob, the, the discussions that we've had thus far.
Yep, I have the, like the red line version, yeah, yep.
So have you reviewed that with recommends, like you have created your own
I have not, we're, I have not redlined it specifically, but I reviewed it and made, made some notes and comments. Um, you know, I'm certainly as we go through it in more detail, probably provide a red line version for the next meeting with what we discussed tonight, if we go forward with it or, you know, with my old comments. But I have not, I have not reviewed it in great detail like nitpicking, I just kinda reviewed it from a more formative standpoint and gotten, you know, some thoughts in my head of ways that we might wanna amend it.
So, and I guess I'll, I'll chime in now by chance to, to talk about this. But I guess when you look at ordinance review or the way things have gone in other townships, there's been one of two options. One is to just get a strong template. It has all of the previously approved legal language. It's, it's been through, you know, several layers of review, pick that up and, and then just fine tune it. Um, and then there's the way we've been going was we took our ordinance and we've just been going line by line and fixing stuff here and there.
Right.
Um, what I've noticed as we, as going through a lot of these other ordinances, um, we're missing a lot of that good legal language, it feels like. Um, or things that maybe they're, you know, we know what the big things are, you know, the setback, the height, the sound. But it does seem like there's a lot of real meat to this ordinance that's missing. I, uh, had gone through and tried to add some of that, uh, back in May, June. Um, and I guess I want some clarification, I guess, between this, you know, what, what has been added to this? Because what I've been tracking myself is I've only been, I guess, in certain color noting what the commission has, uh, approved. And the stuff that I'm proposing we add, I, I've left in a separate color just for clarity sake. So I, I guess that's a question of what, what's in here.
So what's in there is what the commission has, has So what's in there is what the commission has, has discussed. That doesn't, that is not a, a draft of what you had submitted to the commission on how you felt the, the direction should go.
Okay.
And I think, uh, my question to you, Randy, is those other, um, townships where they have the more defined legal jargon, are those existing? Because I think why we did, why we took the route that we did was because we had, and we have an existing ordinance.
Yes, all of them, most of them, I can't say all of them.
Cause I know some of them have not in our town, or in our county, there are, there are townships that do not.
I, I, to be honest, I haven't looked at a, a ton of them that's been in our county, it's been out, cause a lot of them just have old, something old or something very basic, so. Um, but like, I mean, for instance, the, that, we, we said we liked the idea of aircraft lighting systems. Did you use my definition or where'd this definition come from? You know, because I had that as something that we hadn't like officially approved the language. So that's where I'm not clear.
What's reflected in that draft is what we have discussed as a group. There were no votes, there were no, um.
Just discussion.
Yeah, so that document reflects discussion from the commission or by the commission.
But you did use my definition of aircraft detection lighting system.
When, if we went around the table and said, are you good with that? Are you good with that? And yes, I used what you drafted.
That was drafted, drafted on it.
I did not have that as a, around the discussion exact, um, but I guess that's another reason I'd like to go through and compare this before we, you know, dig in, I guess.
So that's what my thought process was tonight, was start from the beginning, yeah. Go through some of that.
So create a third document, basically. You have Brandy's version, you have the commission's version, and then we would create a new one with Leslie.
No, well. I think I. No, I, no, there's not three, not three, there's only two. There's the original and there's the one that we agreed on as a group on a commission. And then tonight, we would relook at that based on her legal advice, kind of fine tune that just a little bit more. And then come up with that third one, yes. Was what the thought process was, so. So we're still in discussion whether we're gonna proceed, any discussion?
Hey, I don't feel comfortable proceeding.
I guess I'd like to revoke my support to the motion and, and wait until we have some more final verbiage on the bylaws. Could, could we?
Well, so, so we're gonna vote whether we're going to.
Oh, to support the motion, right.
We can, we're gonna vote whether we're proceeding or not proceeding, so.
I think, I think Phil, if we can reword your motion and follow, if you're saying you're splitting hairs, a discussion is different than a review. A review would be, this is what we've discussed, what do you think of this so far?
So we would just be listening to Leslie talk and anybody.